Oh, kicking you out of your... I don't have to.
Gives us more...
One more thing up there.
Yeah. Go here and crap.
All right, I'm gonna come up here, go back here. See you guys.
And then we will open the regular session of the town council for April 28th at 4:02 PM. If you'll view stand in your place, please. I'd like to leave you in time of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have no public hearing, so then we will open it for public comments. Here are the wishes, please, when you do, please rise and give our secretary your name, please.
Yeah, my name's Orlando Gonzalez, 1002 Western Place. Thank you. I said a couple of comments, I said, "Read the paper last week that you folks are doing some renovation in the city hall." Okay?
Yes.
Which I'll find it adding, great. Okay, but I wanted to point something out which wasn't in the paper. It's the condition of your sidewalk and the condition of the curb. Okay? If you want to set an example for the rest of the town, those need to be fixed. Okay? Several years ago, it was right about the time that you put this new sidewalk in, my wife fell over here. She came over here to pay a water bill, she fell, she tripped on a broken sidewalk. We didn't file a suit. She still suffers from pain from that hip when she fell down there.
Yeah.
But, you know, it's just, if you want to set an example, or what is community pride, or whatever, fix the sidewalk.
Okay.
You're gonna have someone else, someone else who's gonna be as nice as we were, say, "Hey, okay, we're gonna take the pain." And I told her, I asked her, "When was that?" I can't remember the dates, she says, "But I still feel it every once in a while. You fall on your hip." She's not a teenager.
Right.
You fall on your hip and you hurt it. And that's dangerous, and almost one of the worst situations in the whole town, in the curb. I don't know, we've been talking to the curb, but it's in bad shape. So I heard it was one, but really like to see that fixed.
Okay, we will look into that, take your advice.
Okay, the other comment I have is I was reading last week's, or last meeting of, oh, I can't remember the date here, but April 28th, okay? And I was looking at the minutes that were in there.
Today's 28th, I think.
I don't, uh, the minutes of, what's, okay, I'm sorry.
Or the minutes at Camp.
Yeah, the 14th, I guess it was 14th. Sorry about that. Okay, yeah, council minutes, the 14th. Again, there are under the department reports, it says, "Seasonal reports," it says, "A report of chief camp backward, back off work per doctor's orders was discussed among councilors." Okay, I would like to know a few folk, and I am monitoring this, I think I've been telling, you know, five or six meetings or whatever, you know, he's been zilled, someone told me he's got a bad back. That's painful and everything. But he looks like he's having a real problem. And I was just wondering, have you people designated an acting police chief?
At the moment, yes, we have, Mr. Matt Bray is our acting police chief.
Yeah, I think I mean, if you, I haven't seen it in the paper.
Yeah.
I think it would be good to put in the paper saying, "Hey, this man is the acting police chief."
That's a very good idea.
So I truly appreciate that. And that's all I have, any questions?
Well, our newspaper man is sitting right here, so we will talk to him and make sure that gets in there so people know if they call and need to talk to the chief, they can talk to Mr. Bray.
Okay, thank you very much. Oh, the other thing is, there's a police vehicle parked over there at the police, at the emergency services building? And it's parked between two barriers or whatever. Is that, is that vehicle dead, or what is that, what's wrong, what's the deal with that vehicle? Do you have to leave an emergency, you can't drive that out of there without backing up?
Yeah, that vehicle's currently being stored.
Stored there.
Stored right there.
Yeah.
It's the chief's vehicle.
Yeah, it just, it seems like it's, people, I see it, and I say, "What's going on there? That vehicle's parked there where you can't even use it." I would think if it's being stored, maybe store it out back. Because it doesn't set a good example, because it's just there, like, uh...
Well, currently, I think it's fine where it's at.
Yeah. But it's honestly, it doesn't make a very impression, what's going on in this vehicle. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bray. Any other comments?
Yeah, my name's Bill Parker, I live over on North East Street. My neighbors and I would like to see if we guys, you guys could get our, help us get our privacy back. We're invaded by cameras from the neighbors next door. And I got pictures, and I'd like for you guys to look at them. There's gotta be a law against cameras being over in your backyard.
They are in your backyard, or someone's...
Yeah, they found over in their yard, my yard, and then other people across the street, too. We have no privacy, and we want to get it back.
Have you been aware of this at all, or have you got...
Well, I'm aware of it, there's some cameras in the front, video up and down, you know, at the intersection and the sidewalks and that area.
Well, if we can, I'll pass you through.
Sure.
If I can speak.
Um, yeah, Chief Bray.
I've been in the house he's talking about, and the cameras do look down into the neighbors' yards. From the neighbors, from the neighborhood they have. And it's, and she pretty much has, or they pretty much have 360 surveillance around their house. They have a big screen TV up, which has all the cameras on it. And I have seen the angles, and I do look down into his yard.
Is there a purpose for that kind of surveillance, other than neighborhood dogs?
Originally, I believe it was to protect her crop that she grows legally.
Yes, okay.
And, uh, but they do, they, like, the one out front, you can see all the way to the highway, up Seventh Street, on the one to the, the one to the front, and I have seen the original. Last summer was the first time I was made aware of this, and went inside, and she was complaining about something, and you could see down into the majority of his yard from her south-facing cameras.
Diane and her is the yard being invaded, too. They've got a camera that points right over at their house.
And you folks live to the west on Seventh Street?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, these are pictures that, by the way, the judge asked the other day when we was in court if there was some way of remedy to this feud between me and her, them. And I said, "Yes, if you can get her to lower her cameras, then everything will stop." You know, my part, I get what I want, because I want those cameras off of me. I can't even walk in my backyard and do anything without being filmed, videoed. And I'm tired of it. These people are tired of it.
So it has been in court now, is...
Yeah, they tried to get me for stalking.
I see.
And...
They're taking pictures of you when you're stalking them?
Yeah. Yeah, they're taking pictures of me. These pictures here are pictures that she submitted as evidence against me. And yet she's got me and their house, everybody's house, if you'll look at them. I wrote on some of them there to demonstrate what she's looking at, what she's got pictures of. And I wanna, I wanna see if I can get that taken clear. I've put up barriers. Uh, these pictures here will show you that I've put up barriers to keep the cameras off of my yard. Okay? I put one of those up just so they wouldn't be able to see me. She even took pictures of my bedroom.
Well, if now the barriers don't quite block it, is that what you're saying?
No, if you walk past the barriers, then they can still see you. But I put them up to block the most of it.
Right, okay.
What I guess, you guys, I need to speak, or we need to maybe have a discussion with our attorney. One of the issues, you know, is one thing is public surveillance and maybe what, maybe necessary people do have a right to grow marijuana, you know, for medicinal purposes nowadays. And I'm not sure what the requirements are as far as protecting that crop, if there is a requirement to provide some security. But, you know, somewhere you go beyond what's in the public's interest or our purview into what becomes a private...
What's invading someone else's privacy?
...issue between neighbors, probably, and I don't know where that is, quite honestly.
What, I mean, I don't understand what the purpose is. I mean, if I, okay, let's say I have a crop out here, right?
Yeah.
And I've got a big fence on either side.
Yeah.
Why do I need cameras up here if I want to see if somebody's in my crops?
Well, they're trying to protect the marijuana, I can understand that. But all they have to do is lower those cameras down where they're not in my yard, and it'll show their fence, it'll show their whole yard if somebody jumps over, they'll have it. You know? But they don't have to watch me. I'm next door. They've, I'll tell you what, they've smoked their brain cells up, they smoked, they smoked it generously. And if you'll notice, and if you'll notice in some of the pictures, she has got privacy, her six-foot privacy fence, and she wants it to work for her, but she doesn't want it to work for me. That, she's got her cameras up high, and she points them right over at my yard. You know, we need to do something about it, I'm tired of it, they're tired of it. And Susan across the street, she's tired of it, they're being videoed, too.
Well, I think this is a matter we need to have a discussion about with the police department, the attorney, and find out what can and can't be done.
Word, yeah.
You know, that's what we need to really do before we can...
Can you see from the pictures how much of my yard she can see?
Yes.
She can see clear across my backyard. That's not reasonable, that's not good.
I think that, like Sam said, we'll have to look at this and discuss it more, because we're here on your side and yours only. And of course, I always want to agree with the person in front of me, so I really have to find out what's going on all the way around. But I can appreciate this second time.
I do think it should, sounds like an invasion, and I guess there has to be a sufficient reason for that kind of invasiveness.
Well, see, I put the plywood on my carport, I've got a good big carport up front. I put plywood down both sides, okay? If it wasn't for that plywood, the camera that she's got in her front yard goes clear across my yard over into the other people's yard. So she can see every, they can see everything I do. I can't even park my car without being...
I'll get this done. Any comments, Ray?
Yes, there are possibly 12 cameras, these people are paranoid.
They're named cameras?
There's just Diane Jolly. There's not just one camera, there's 12. And when we put our, put a roof up last year, I said we'd take pictures of how it looks when it's done. He came, the neighbor came over and said, "You can't take pictures," and I yawned. That's how paranoid he was.
I do think we need to look into, we'll have a chat with our acting chief and our legal counsel, and we'll see what can and legally be done.
Well, she told the judge that she wouldn't lower them because she's had vandalism, which, she's still gonna see the vandalism if she lowers her cameras. If she just brings them out of our yards, that's all she's got to do. How do you have...
Did you, does this leave a telephone number?
My phone number?
You have it?
I've got contact.
Okay, thank you. Any additional comments?
Anyway, we appreciate your attention and everything, we're gonna leave.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bray.
We had a couple of things under communications comments and informational items, any questions about that at all? A couple of new things added with news releases from the Fremont, Wayneville National Forest, and...
Oregon Department of Forestry.
And, yeah, yeah, Oregon Department of Forestry. Everybody can't stream, but I saw there about fires and things.
Getting the, yeah, the Oregon Department of Forestry is talking about fire danger, a couple of fires that they've had already, and just urging people to be cautious, not predicting when fire season's going to start just yet. And the other one that actually is not about fire, the one from the Fremont National Forest is about, they're kicking off with meetings in Clamath Falls and Lakeview, a new forest plan process that hasn't been done since, I think it was in the 90s, 80s?
1989.
90, I think it was the last one, and so they're beginning the process of updating the Fremont, Wayneville National Forest plan, which I'm sure will be a multi-year-long process. So the last one was done before they joined the two forests together? Uh, yeah, I'm sure it was, yeah, each forest would have just had their own plan then.
And then we had something from invitation from Warren Correctional Facility, did you want to comment on that?
Hey, just if you guys have any questions, there's a copy of the invitation there to our flag raising ceremony tomorrow with the honor guard. And then Wednesday, our deputy director and inspector general will be here for our awards ceremony, so if you want to come, if you're invited, or anybody else would like to attend, I'd love to see you.
Okay.
Well, we'd like to thank you for the invite, I would be able to attend, because I work, but...
Me, too, but I'll be working.
Yeah, that sounds... Okay. Anything else? Did you have anything to add to the information?
Oh, my, I didn't think about having to say.
Well, you don't have to, I just thought maybe you were here for a purpose.
No, I just came to listen, I've been, it seems like every time you all have your council meetings, I've got something going on, and I just thought I'd come by.
Can you give me kind of a report for us about how some of the things are going in your world?
Um, sure. And Ray can chime in, because he kind of, we kind of follow each other around a little bit, but Red Rock is moving along. I believe it's May 15th is the DEQ hearing. The public comment is open now, as I recall, Ray, please.
I remember the...
Uh, I think it's the 15th at 6:00 at the, someplace different than usual, I don't think it's the senior center.
I don't have it in this plane.
I'm sorry, I didn't bring my calendar, and I've got it written there, but, uh...
We'll hear about it before then.
I can let Amy know, and she can send it out to you all. So we're getting close to the end of the air quality piece that needs to be done. And then, what would be next after that?
Oh, they're still working through...
Oh, the UGB?
The UGB amendment process, trying to find the best way to accomplish that. They also are working on, you know, there's various agreements between the town and the county in Red Rock that still have not been completed at this point.
Right.
The, um... Also, they are working through the DEQ process, and they're, of course, using copious amounts of federal funds, so they're in the midst of an environmental assessment. It includes everything from wetlands to archaeological resources, so... There'll be a conference call again, last week's was canceled, but there'll be another one again this coming Thursday that we'll get an update on those various things. They're just plodding along through the various things that a $200 million project has to deal with.
You know, it is, I mean, it feels slow, but it is happening, and there is progress. Almost every week, there's reports of progress, so it feels pretty good. And getting through the DEQ process is like one of the...
One of the major...
One of the major things in the next, you know, it's just taking each piece, and there's always something that comes up that, you know, that you don't think of maybe, or that it takes a little longer to do. But they're, I think they're moving forward very well. Extremely responsible group of people, I think, and I think they're doing the best they can. Um, I don't know how many of you, I think Mike attended, and Ray attended the greenhouse meeting last night.
Mike and Michael, mhm.
Oh, you were there, too, okay, good. So, you know, there's a lot of controversy, and I think that it is very positive that they held a community meeting. I think they got a lot of things out on the table, they really dealt more with the marijuana grow than they did any of the other things, and it wasn't that they wanted to have that much emphasis on it, but that obviously is the controversial piece. So I think they had a lot of courage and a lot of smarts to just come out and do that. They've got, as Red Rock or anybody, they have a lot of process to go through, a lot of negotiation to go through. It's very early on, there were a lot of questions last night that couldn't really be answered, and I apologized to Ray for making him talk about water last night, but it looked like they were going into weeds about water. And I felt like I needed to, somebody needed to say something that knew more about it than the folks that were talking about it. So it's, you know, it's another one of those that's gonna be coming along, and it, we'll see. They've been in town today, meeting with folks, they're gonna be meeting with more people tomorrow, they're, they're moving along.
Are they anticipating much trouble? I mean, the state has not put out any definitive guidelines or policies or anything, have they? They won't be, they won't be able to grow until January of next year.
Yeah, this is all very preliminary, you know, they're, I think they're, they're putting their feelers out early, because there's a lot, I mean, there is really a lot going on in the state right now about this whole issue. I was talking to a friend yesterday who lives in the Portland area, they said, "You cannot find any warehouse space in the city at all." It is lease and rent.
I think the market will be so saturated.
It's really, you know, it's really something, so, you know, who knows what this all means, there's a lot of speculation. I think we all have to sit back and be careful, and be wise, and due process, and we'll see what happens, you know? And they're talking about 150 full-time jobs and 50 part-time, with really good benefits, et cetera, et cetera. And that's a pretty, pardon the expression, sexy deal for this community, so I, you know, it's a hard thing to refute, but there were folks that really set their mind, you know, about, you know, philosophically about what it meant to them. Disappointing, I think, to some of them that this would happen in their community, but there are other folks that, you know, it's kind of here to stay, and we have to figure out how to cope with it, and how to make it right for our community. And that's kind of where I'm, you know, where I'm coming from, but...
Do you know what's going on just south of us, outside of the...
Marijuana.
Same thing.
Yeah, same thing.
That's going to be a big trial.
Yeah.
They're going to be just doing medicinal, or for export to Oregon?
No, they can't export.
No, they can't export, they can't...
Yeah, if it's grown in one state, it has to stay in that state.
Yeah, it has to stay where it's from, so...
It's working for Mexico.
No.
Well, it's on the land.
Sure, it's exposed.
Yeah, it is, yeah, it's a bigger tribe. And then it is also, if the, a big building that has been at the casino, that is...
But I think they're looking at gearing up.
Wherever runs a casino is starting plants in that one, so there's a couple of different tribes down there.
It's already doing well.
Is it?
Mm-hmm.
We have several patients at the Altris.
Yes, there was, I didn't get to go to the meeting last night, but it commented to me some concern about how that may or may not affect our geothermal well. I wasn't at the meeting, and I don't, but I do know that I pass it on to our facility's folks, Ray, just to be involved in those conversations.
And, you know, we don't know enough yet to be able to, and I made that comment last night, that we can't at this point predict what their usage will be exactly, in terms of numbers, and, you know, some idea that, you know, there's, that that's some stuff to be determined, however, I think that there's no doubt that what DOC's use is a priority use there on that, on that particular lot, and, you know, there's other resources out there. The three things, it's in the urban growth boundary, it's not in the city limits of town, so it, you know, that way, it's really what we have to kind of bring to the table are, you know, potable water, or possibly irrigation water, sewer services, if you've got 150 employees, you obviously don't have a need for water, potable water and sewer services. And then, of course, the, one of the reasons, and they said last night that they're looking at Lakeview as the geothermal resource, and being able to, you know, in this climate, if you're having to eat all the way along with natural gas, or some of the other sources that we do have available, not natural gas, propane, or the other sources, it probably is cost prohibitive, but...
Is there a way to find out, to limit the amount of water they can have, say, you know...
Well, last night at the meeting, I had the guy that talked, I was there for a little bit before I had to go over the call, that he said that they were gonna be returning all the water back into the system, that they're just gonna be using the heat and returning the water. So after the initial, so after the initial draw, the remaining draw off that should be very small, just friction loss and evaporation.
So it would just be recycled, or recycled.
Yeah, they'll do a little bit through friction loss and evaporation, but...
We're talking about two different things, you know?
Yeah.
The geothermal, there will be no consumption of water, it will only be consumption of heat as it passes through their system, and all of the water will return for the re-injection. With regards to potable water, or possible irrigation water, there will be a usage of water. They're gonna recover, you know, in an efficient and manner as possible, everything they can, but there will be... And, and so there will be, you know, some amount of water needs for irrigation, and, again, for the domestic use of 150 employees in the facilities to go along with that.
But when you look at the amount they were planning to use versus the recycling, and then comparing it to Alkalfa.
Right.
Oh, pretty much not, I...
Yeah, right. Well, and I've had a little bit of conversation with them as I've been in and out of town, and last week, about the state-of-the-art equipment that they're using, I mean, it's way beyond what Ginger's technical brain can do, but it's pretty impressive, and I think if they even are doing half of what they're saying or claiming that these greenhouses, the efficiency and everything, it's, the footprint, as they call it, or the carbon footprint, is gonna be pretty minimal. And, and I think they chose Lakeview for several different reasons. I think one is our economic structure could really use an injection, so that, they're hoping that they're gonna be, that's gonna be attractive to the community, and the geothermal and the number of Sundays that we have is really great. They looked at Eugene, they looked at Clamath Falls, I'm not quite sure why Clamath didn't seem quite so attractive. I think maybe they didn't have geothermal, or as much as what we have available.
They came here first, and they liked it.
That's true.
That's what it boils down to.
They did some checking in Eugene, and they just, the Sundays and geothermal, and the...
It's humidity.
Humidity, the opportunity for mold and disease stuff, not just with the marijuana, but other crops that they want to grow. So anyway, that's moving right along.
Preliminary, and just, you know, numbers that I heard, you know, batted around as far as how much water, you know, potable water they may use on a daily basis, and it's a pretty big range, but from 75,000 gallons to 150,000 gallons a day. To give you an idea of what that amounts to, that's like our new swimming pool, about half-full. So it's not really a...
Well, it sounds like a lot.
It sounds like, when you start adding zeros, it adds like, it sounds like a lot of water, but when you put it in a, something you can kind of recognize, it's this room probably, this room full would probably have again, is an idea.
So really quickly, two other things, is the Main Street revitalization planning. We met with Sherri Stewart at Oregon Main Street, we developed a preliminary plan. We're meeting tomorrow night to go over that. That'll be our first meeting since we did that planning session with her, and the steering committee is just basically sort of ratifying that and fine-tuning it, looking at the LCDC, which is the Lake County Development Corporation, as a fiscal sponsor, or our partner, nonprofit partner, as they step out and start doing things. You know, it's, it's a little early to say exactly all the activities and what they're looking at, but they, they would be what you would imagine, focusing on the downtown area and then moving out, looking at facades, looking at promotion, looking at buy local, you know, all those kinds of things. Ray, do you have anything to add to that? That's just kind of, thank you. So that's sort of where that is at. And then the other...
Yeah, actually, that's a bad idea.
The other thing that I think is really exciting, and there was a little bit of discussion about it last night, is that there's been a group of green grower food, organic food folks that had, and some meat growers, that have been twisting and turning now for almost a year, trying to develop some sort of plan or way to do their work or their jobs a little more efficiently, and especially for the green growing vegetables and things like that with our climate. How are we doing this, the, you know, the opportunity for greenhouses isn't much, it's expensive, and so, anyway. This group, they call themselves the Outback Food Initiative, and they... this group, they call themselves the Outback Food Initiative, and they have joined up with Oregon Food Bank, and Oregon Food Bank came this last weekend, and on, uh, Saturday they had a planning session, and they have an acronym for this planning session called Feast, and I'm sorry, I can't tell you what all those letters mean, but they had a very successful planning session with Sharon Thornberry, who's a mover and shaker at Oregon Food Bank, and, uh, they are going to be embarking on some marketing, uh, figuring out how to support each other as growers, looking for funding, I, we're getting plugged into, um, Oregon Department of Agriculture and USDA, there's some grants and some help, um, that may be available for them, and we got a rare position, an intern that will begin in September and, uh, of this year, and will be with us until August of sixteen, to do a countywide food assessment, so that we're gonna know where our food's coming from, where it's going to, how much is being grown, uh, what the needs are, what people really want, what kinds of education we need to do. Lake District Hospital is very involved with the CHIP program with this group, um, it, it's really kind of got some legs and some traction finally, and I'm really happy for them, because I think there's some good stuff that will come out of that. The Saturday market's involved, you know, all of the players, you would think, so that's good. There's probably something else, but that's enough.
Well, that's very good, thank you. Okay, any other, uh, we have the consent calendar, the regular session minutes for April fourteen.
I was skipping the, the, oh, I'm sorry, I'm a drivel, I forgive me. Cut that.
That was a race, race.
Yeah.
Okay, so we are back to the consent calendar, which is just minutes of our last meeting on April fourteen. Any comments or corrections to be made?
I, I did need to make, and I'm trying to find it here.
Okay.
And I, maybe I don't recall, I don't see it in front of me, but in regards to the motion for the carpet, it says that Michael made that motion, did he mark it?
Oh, I don't remember, it's been weeks.
That's what I, maybe it's, anyway, the same, same result, so that's fine, I really didn't have a problem with that, but I, I don't recall the copy in that way, but...
I think you did, yeah.
Yeah, I actually did.
I think, I think we, we had a corrected motion that they look at the local businesses. Does that, have you checked local businesses for some, like?
I, I...
You want, you want that option, so...
There's no blue carpet anywhere to be had, and so... Be careful, we're only getting the motions tonight, we might have a tie vote.
Yeah.
I did, I have, I have checked locally, there's the same type of...
I think that's smacks of manipulation.
I, I have been doing some checking, I have not actually checked with Progo yet, but I did check with, with Flynn's, uh, they don't have the, the industrials or commercial grade carpet squares available like these are, but they do have amounts of, you know, roll carpet that they're probably also not nearly as...
It's not local, but Frank's Carpet in Clamath, in Alters has great selection of things. And they don't all come in that color. Okay, so we are still on the consent calendar, we need a motion to accept the minutes.
I make a motion, we accept the consent calendar as presented.
Okay, uh, is there a second? I can second that. Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, mayor, council, manager, update. Uh, I did attend the counseling, uh, sleep, my first one, it was short, but we informed him, and I think that Superintendent Brown had said he was going to be interviewing some people for vacancies there, so...
Good.
Sharon, anything else?
I had the first, um, I was notified of the first senior citizen board meeting while I was in Reno, uh, taking my granddaughter to a college visitation, so I didn't get to be there for the first time, but I'm sure it makes, we'll get it on my calendar sooner and work around that.
Good. To second the fact that we had been at that meeting last night concerning the greenhouses, uh, did that, also, having been on the ag advisory committee, there's been some things going on, um, at the school district concerning, uh, the FFA advisor, and I do know that they are working on that through, uh, the HR process.
And I think Ginger pretty well covered my report.
Thank you.
Is that red box that...
And, uh, Ray, did you have anything else to add to?
Uh, Ginger pretty well covered my report. A reminder, the next Tuesday will be our, uh, our first budget meeting at four o'clock.
Oh, fuck.
So it's that time of year.
Oh, boy.
At?
Four o'clock.
Four o'clock, right here.
Right.
Would you like a reminder call?
Yes.
I have a little email with...
Email, a reminder, send up a flyer.
Send a cop down.
Or Tuesday morning, would you do that?
Tuesday morning?
No, Monday.
Come by every day.
Tomorrow.
You can just put me on your old man list.
Okay, moving on, now we have no old business, we have no new business, and we have no executive session, I don't believe, so I will close the town council meeting, unless anyone else has questions or comments. At four, what is it, forty...
Thirty-seven.
Or thirty-seven, or thirty-eight.
Thirty-seven.
Thirty?
Thirty, whatever.
Sixteen, thirty-six.
By the time I get it out...
I know, it'll be a different minute.
Okay, and you all for coming.